Recording has begun.
Good evening, I'm now calling the Tuesday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to Order. Time is seven twelve P M. Please note that in accordance with the Government Code Section five four nine five three E three, this meeting is being held by teleconference only. Because of video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when Commissioners, staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and are not using webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considered video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you're not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Spring?
Here.
Vice President Sherlock?
Present.
Commissioner Basiji?
Here.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn? And Commissioner Warren?
Here.
You have six Commissioners present. For the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters, consultants, and staff role call. Strategic planning consultant Scott?
Here.
Programs planning and grants manager Rendler?
She's muted, but she's here.
Yeah.
Okay, now President.
Emergency services manager Gluhem?
Present.
General manager Logan?
Here.
Lead deputy county council Chalbun? Chris, I think you're on mute.
Present.
Thank you. Presenters, consultants, and staff are accounted for.
Thank you very much. Now have President remarks. As a reminder, often we cancel this August monthly meeting due to the traditional late summer vacation travel schedules that make it difficult to get a quorum. But we did have some required business items we need to fulfill this month. So I appreciate you all being here this evening, especially given the mystery issues of Zoom. So thank you all for being here. Recognizing this is a normally canceled evening, we've endeavored to keep it particularly short, which is why you may notice the unusual practice of putting the main reports, the general manager report and the fire chief report on the consent calendar. So that way you can read it offline and not have an agendized oral reports this evening. That's the reason for this. Next month at our regular meeting, we'll go back to the normal oral reports. I definitely encourage you to read those if you haven't already. There's some good information there. I will take this opportunity to highlight two items from there for both you and for any public who see this recording. First, September is the National Emergency Preparedness Month as sponsored by FEMA. I hope there's good awareness of that, which is why I wanted to mention it. And we hope it results in everyone taking a small step towards being better prepared. And the second item I want to call out is that is deserving of it. We have one neighborhood in our district that deserves some praise and recognition. The Saddle Mountain Neighborhood has become the first one in our district to complete the criteria to be officially recognized by Firewise USA as a firewise community. So we should thank all the residents of that area for their participation. I continually hear about their neighborhood really working on their on their properties to make them a firewise community. And they're really role models for district neighborhoods in that regard. So some special thanks for the steering committee of that neighborhood. Drew Anderson, Anna Smith, Michael Gravy, Martha Bowden, and all the neighborhood. So thank you to them. And that's, those are my comments. We will now move on to the, to item three, public comment. Persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose shorter time limits. I doubt that will come into play tonight. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda? I see. Great. I see one hand up. That would be Steve Jordan. You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, and we have a timer coming from.
It's right there.
Okay. So thank you, Commission, for your service, for having this meeting on a normal off month, and I'll try to be brief. And it's been over three years, as you know, that we're working on the hydrant leak sensors. But we still, Charisma would still like to complete a, an agreement in a deliberate and businesslike manner consistent with public interest. I want to briefly share some new information with you tonight. As you know, we started this in March twenty nineteen. The leak sensors are designed by EcoLogic, the subsidiary of a leading U.S. hydrant manufacturer. Approved by County Fire in May of twenty nineteen and approved by the commission in July of twenty nineteen before the pandemic and the audit. What some of the research we've done, there are clear benefits to the fire district for installing these sensors. First, the cost is zero to the fire district of the sensors. The district will benefit because the sensors can show suspected points of interest which could become leaks in the future. And of course, Charisma will provide the GPS location of each hydrant if desired to County Fire and the fire district. The use of these sensors has been endorsed by Governor Newsom through a report issued just last year by the California Energy Commission. Concluded that they detect leaks at inception before the pipeline breaks, thus preventing system damage, damage to property, loss of fire and water service. And with three faults in the district, I'm sure the commission recognizes that public harm could occur if the lack of water occurs after a quake. This isn't theoretical, it took NAPA three weeks to identify all the leaks after its quake. Charisma plans to provide a hundred percent of the capital, power, installation and support costs, which we estimated six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in five years and nine hundred thousand dollars in ten years. We provided the details of this to council. These are long-lived assets that take about four to five years before the installation is complete. For, and it's been designed specifically for the LIHCF, the hydrant density locations and our pipe materials. So that's why we've balked at the demand from the district for a ninety-day termination and a five-year term. We need, we believe both demands are inconsistent with the public interest. And since it's been stated by the fire district that these are county requirements, it should be simple for us to verify this with the board of supervisors if necessary. And finally, I'll say San Jose Water Company, which is the largest water retailer in the county, has deployed these successfully across fifty-two percent of the county with great success finding leaks before they surfaced, thirty-six non-surfacing leaks. And they've deployed ten thousand sensors at a cost of over ten million dollars. And they believe it's critical to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. My understanding is that the Charisma proposal was just received today and will be reviewed by council, as you'd expect. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? I see one hand up, Alan.
Thank you. As I have been for almost three years, I'm once again disappointed to see that the signing of a leak detection pumper cap agreement with Charisma Hills Water District is not on the agenda. These leak sensors are important additions which will save dwindling water resources, reduce expense, and save rate payers money. It is apparent that this delay must be due to some impasse in management negotiations. Charisma Hills Water District and Los Altos Hills County Fire District are public agencies and have at least six thousand residents in common. Installation of these sensors is of public interest. The purpose of the commission is to represent the people, and these meetings are required to be held in public so as to provide the opportunity for citizens to participate in their governance and express their views. This item should be placed on next month's agenda. Either an agreement should be proposed for signing or an explanation for the impasse should be presented. And the public can have input and the commission can advise staff on how it wishes to proceed. Further delay and suppression of the facts is not in the public interest. This dispute further demonstrates the practical irrationality of the district being responsible for hydrants on another agency's water system. First, it is quite unusual, and as shown here, it interferes with the water district's ability to effectively manage the system for which they are responsible. In addition, as I've stated previously, it adds unnecessary complexity to the fire district's operation, which has limited experience and no staff or equipment to address maintaining water system assets. The real solution to this matter is to transfer responsibility to hydrants to Charisma Hills Water District, just as hydrants in the other half of the district are the responsibility of Cal Water. Again, I request that the subject of the installation of leak detectors on district-owned hydrants be placed on next month's agenda. This delay has gone on way too long. This commission needs to fulfill its responsibilities to its constituents. Lastly, I'll comment on the notion that the that the county controls this matter. The delegation of responsibilities to the fire district includes all responsibilities with the exception of litigation. That's included in the language. So what the county believes is appropriate isn't relevant if the district commissioners believe some other requirement is appropriate. So please put this on the agenda and, and come to a solution on this matter. It's an important matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And for Mr. Epstein's benefit, I will repeat that we only received the Charisma official response contractual proposal today around noon, and it will be handled professionally as all our contractual negotiations have. Thank you. Next, any other comments from the public? I see none. We will now move on to item four, the consent calendar and changes to the order of agenda. Are there any comments from staff on these items?
Yes, I have a comment to make. Thank you, Jay Logan, manager. I would like to note that the general manager's report tonight, August sixteenth, is the second year commemoration of the start of the CZU complex lightning fire that was followed by the SCU complex fire. I would like to thank the fire chief and the responding fire crews in Cal Fire for their immediate response to the state of fires in the district on July thirtieth. Thank you, Chief Kirkow, and for the incident command that immediately notified me and the town manager of the onset of these fires and for keeping us informed throughout the fire event. So just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission on any of these items on the consent calendar? Or would any commissioners like to make changes or the order of agenda?
I do have one item, actually, I need, this is, Mr. Clerk, yeah. Thank you. So I would like to request continuation of item four B, the financial statement package for July. And this is due to technical difficulties on my end. My computer went on the fritz. I was not able to recover the QuickBooks files until yesterday and upload them to a new computer, which did not allow me the time that I had hoped to prepare this report. So I'm hoping to continue it into the September meeting.
Okay. Chris, does that take a motion for us to remove that from the, potentially from the consent calendar? Or can I just, can we just do that?
Sorry, I think you can just move the consent calendar as amended with deferral of that item.
Okay, great. Well, the other, before we do that, are there any other questions from commission on any items? Hearing or seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to.
Warren moves to adopt the consent calendar with the item identified by the district clerk for continuation.
Excellent. Thank you. A second, please.
Sherlock seconds.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherlock. Let's see, the item's open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission on this? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? I see there's one. And please direct your questions to me, the board president, for any questions you may have. Thank you. You may proceed, Alan.
Yes, I just want to mention that you should also continue item four C. That also is not included in the packet and probably for the same reason. Thank you.
I believe four C was actually, is actually prepared and was sent out after the original agenda package. Is that true?
My mistake. Four C was added as an addendum this afternoon.
Yeah. So I would, so thank you for the comment, Alan. Hope that helps. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Only motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item five, which is to receive a report on the development of the successor strategic plan. I will see General Manager Logan, will you, actually, let's start with five A, which is the addition of Commissioner Basiji to the ad hoc commission successor strategic plan subcommittee. General Manager Logan, can you introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, President Spring. Commissioner Basiji is now available to join the ad hoc strategic plan subcommittee. He attended the first meeting of the subcommittee as a listener and made no comments. I suggest the commission consider appointing Commissioner Basiji to the subcommittee. And by doing this, it will provide additional commissioner support for the subcommittee work and also for any kind of, of travel plans or schedules of the other commissioners who may not be able to attend the meetings. So I recommend that approval of this motion, and I thank you.
Great, thank you. And I want to thank Commissioner Basiji for stepping forward. And now he wanted to check his schedule before he could commit to it. I really, I think it really makes the subcommittee stronger. Would Jack make any comments, Jim?
I just wanted to let you know that I'm really looking forward to doing this, partially as a, you know, as a desire to learn a lot more about the fire district and also be able to contribute as much as I can.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, I will now.
Joan has her hand up.
Oh, Joan, okay.
No, no clarifying questions, just wanted to say welcome, Jim. Thanks for joining. We're delighted.
Well, let's wait and see how we vote on this first.
Oh, you're right.
I will now entertain a motion from the commission to approve the appointment of Commissioner Basiji to the ad hoc committee. Does anyone care to make a motion? I see Commissioner Sherlock's hand.
Sherlock makes a motion to welcome him to the committee.
And can I have a second?
Warren seconds.
Great. The item's now open for discussion. Any further discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Great, we will now vote to approve Commissioner Basiji as a member of the ad hoc subcommittee. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you, everybody. We will now move on to item five B, which is receiving a report from the successor strategic plan subcommittee. Commissioners Warren, Sherlock, please present the report.
Great. So there's slides, there's a, there's a PDF in the packet, but Marcy, do we want to use the slides that we work up?
I'm happy to share them from my screen if that's.
If you would, please, and I'll talk through them.
Perfect.
Great. Okay, so we met back on August ninth, and as a result of, of that discussion, the, I, I agreed and Joan voted wholeheartedly to appoint me as the chairman of the subcommittee. And so I will be the acting chair moving forward. So what I want to do is cover and quickly go through the report here on what we discussed on August ninth and get a sense of the commission on direction moving forward. Because as, as a subcommittee on this, what we're doing is we're doing the legwork. We're putting together the ideas and the framework. But this is really the commission's strategic plan, and we bring ideas and proposals to the commission and for approval. And once we approve by the commission, then we'll go with and and implement them. And so what tonight we want to do is get a sense from the commission that we're headed in the right direction and that we can actually move forward with implementing the strategic plan. And, you know, kind of just once again to, for everyone's education and to reiterate the purpose of where the strategic plan fits in our kind of canon of documents that, that form the foundation for the commission. And strategic plan, you know, sits at the, at a high level of direction of where the organization is going. It's our roadmap forward. And it sets the prioritization for the commission activities and the staff activities. And we operationalize that through our annual budget. So, you know, that's how we, you know, a lot of what we, you know, how we, we get things done is to our budget. You know, and we have to do that twelve to eighteen months out a lot of times. And so we have to have vision of where we want to be, and we use the strategic plan to do that. And the strategic plan also flows in and helps guide the CWPP. You know, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan NX four, and that, but it also flows back in the same way. So we discussed, you know, the, the purpose of the strategic plan. We discussed who were, who are the target audience of the strategic plan. Obviously, this organization, the group here is an audience member. The staff is an audience member. We have key stakeholders at county who are obviously, you know, have a definite key stakeholders. We have our partner agencies, which are an audience with the strategic plan. And additionally, the residents of the district are key stakeholders. It's their district. And so they need to be an audience of the strategic plan of understanding where the district is heading. And so, and then we discuss, you know, the context of where, where we are today and how we're going to develop this plan and, and what the environment looks like today and looking forward out into the future. All right, Marcy, next slide. Okay, so what we want to propose tonight is, is that we, last meeting, we, we went back and forth about where we are with the term for the strategic plan. And what we're proposing is a recommended five-year plan. And so the reason we chose five years and recommended five years is that we have a number of large milestones in the future. We've, we're, we are in the process pursuing a project for I two eighty that's at least thirty-six months. We wanted to cover that. We also out there in the future will be the renewal of the automatic renewal of our partnership or agreement with County Fire and our and our, you know, invaluable partners that, you know, provide the actual services to our district in terms of emergency response. And so that, that is an auto renew agreement that, you know, don't foresee any issues with that. But that will renew in the, you know, that five-year timeframe. And the other item here is why five years makes sense is we're going to put a lot of investment into this plan over the next couple of months. And we want to have a direction of where we're headed. But that, this is not a legally binding document. We, as an organization, can come back and amend it at any time we want to. If we cut, you know, if the world changes in, in twenty-four months, we may say, hey, we need to amend this or change this. But we, we wanted to make sure that we had a vision that took us out into the future so that some things are going to take a long time to implement. We want to make sure that we're pointing, you know, the ship in the right direction. So we're recommending a five-year plan. Next slide, Marcy. And what, and then how to get there? How, you know, you know, here we are mid-August. We want to wrap this up by hopefully end of November because, or mid-November, because we generally don't meet in September. Now, so we want to get this, you know, completed. So initial steps are the subcommittee will return and conduct a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the district. It's kind of a framework in which they'll hold a discussion. We're playing, we're proposing to do two surveys out to one out to our residents, you know, to get their feedback, and then a survey and a meeting with our stakeholders to get their input. Because we figured that the residents would have a different view and input to the district than the stakeholders. You know, partner agencies, you know, they're going to look at the world differently, and they're going to respond in a different language. So we figured that it would be appropriate to have two different surveys, one for residents and one for our stakeholders. And then the, the intent is to have a meeting with, you know, a public meeting, probably with the residents also to get their feedback. And then to take all of this input into the process and discuss the tools, processes, and frameworks, you know, for that input and distill that into an actual cohesive plan that we actually document and bring graphs forward to the commission here. And so the plan is to return to the commission each month to make recommendations and report on progress. And, you know, obviously, the big ones will be when we have the meetings and the surveys go out and then the feedback from the surveys. And then when we get to the draft versions and then input from obviously the commission on the the draft with the intent of adopting a final version before the end of the calendar year. Joan, did I capture everything?
Yep, I think so.
Okay. Great. So Roger, I think what I want to do is, is we got to make sure, we get a sense from the commission of A, this, A, the five-year timeframe is, is agreed to by the commission and that the proposed plan of work is, you know, supported by the commission.
I will open up to any other comments from other commissioners first. Any, any like to comment? Given that George and Peter are both on the phone, it's harder for them to step forward. I will say that I think it makes perfect sense to me. I really like the reasoning you used in terms of what that five-year period covers. I think I love how aggressive you're being with making this happen. I think the SWOT analysis is a really good idea. I think it's going to be really interesting for us. And I like you getting a survey. I think that's going to be, since mentioning things as well, so I'm, I'm all on board.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Roger. George or Cavita, any input? Did you, you're tired for you to speak up?
Very good, thank you.
No, no, I don't have anything, thank you.
I will take that as a confirming direction.
Very good. All right, Jim, Joan, I think we have our marching orders.
Great, thanks.
Let's ask, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes.
I'm not seeing any, so I think that's good confirmation as well. Just wanted to check. Great, thank you for your time, all of you, and I appreciate your ongoing service for this. We will now move on to item six. Item six A is the professional service agreement between the district and Fector, is that pronouncing it right? And Fector and Company for Financial Auditing Services as described in the agenda item title. Item six B is the memo report. Financial consultant Vargas, please introduce the items.
Thank you. So as I think I've reported in prior meetings, our previous auditing firm of Ide Bailey has, they gave us notice earlier this year that they are unable to, they don't have staffing resources to continue as our auditor. And so we, I worked with county council, county council, and we worked to piggyback off, see if there was a, a potential to piggyback off of a existing contract with a private auditor. And it so happened that South County Fire had just recently gone through an RFP process. And so we reviewed that their RFP process and their contract, and it was comparable to what our district needs were. So we have worked, worked with county council and have come up with an agreement with Fector. And this is going to be, it's kind of a two-part audit. The actual audit fee itself is eighteen thousand dollars. And then there's also the mandatory state controller report included in this two thousand dollars for total contract cost of twenty thousand dollars, which is, I'm, I'm glad to announce this is less than what our, what we were paying for our previous auditor. So I'm just, you know, very happy with the, the piggyback process. And I also wanted to point out that this is a one-year contract just for the fiscal year just ended, fiscal year twenty-two. And this price is just for the one fiscal year. And if we're satisfied with Fector's work, then we would probably return to the commission next year. work, then we would probably return to the Commission next year with amendment to the agreement, our new agreement. And yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Financial Consultant Vargas. Are there any clarifying questions from the Commission? See. Seeing or hearing none. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion. Looking for motion from those with video today. How about Joan, you look like you could
I move that we accept the proposal.
Excellent. And for a second?
Second, Warren seconds.
Great, thank you. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commission on this item? Is there any public comment on this item? And please direct your questions to me, the board president. Thank you. Alan, you may proceed.
Yes, I'd like to make two comments. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the staff for getting an $8,000 reduction from the vendor, from the price that was quoted last month for this service. Second, I'd like to say that there's an inconsistency between what the clerk said and what the term and the document intends to imply. The clerk says this is a one-year agreement, but section five, the term of the agreement, says it's a one-year agreement with an option for additions of two years. As I mentioned to, or as I sent an email earlier today, if the intent is to have a real option for two additional years, then I would think that it should be included in the proposal from the, from the vendor. So it is clear that there is an option for two additional years and what the price will be for those two additional years. The term of the agreement can be found in section five of the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. And a point of clarification, we originally budgeted at 28, but when you find at the final price, from then it was 20. So great, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none. If there's no further discussion, we will now vote on the approval of the professional services agreement. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
The motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you. We'll now move on to item seven, and item seven is Commissioner Reports and Future Agenda Items. This is an opportunity for commissioners to provide reports on any future agenda topics. Are there any comments from the Commission on this? Our history is that there aren't, but I will offer the, looking for that unique first opportunity. Seeing nothing, thank you. And I don't need a public comment given that there are no Commission item discussion on this. Let's see, item 7B is the notice that the next regular commission meeting will take place September 20th, 2022. Any comments in the Commission on that date? I think we have a sense of who's going to be there, and we'll have a good quorum for that. I think we're okay with that. Seeing no comments on that. Any public comment on the next month's scheduling? Seeing none. Thank you. We will now move on to
Actually, there is a public
I see the hand just came up. Yes, sir. Yes, Alan.
Well, I actually don't have a comment on the next month's schedule, but I, I would like just to say that I did make a comment on the previous item, and that wasn't a comment under the items not on agenda. It was a comment on an item that was on the agenda, and I think it would be appropriate for this, for someone to respond to the comment that, that I made as opposed to just, you know, basically ignoring, ignoring it. Thank you very much.
I believe we, you wrote two comments. One was about the price being less than the budgeted amount, the other being the fact that you thought that there was a miscommunication from the clerk or the financial consultant about the term of the contract. Sounds to me very similar in that we are contracted for a year. We do not have to join with them for any additional years beyond that, but we can, we can proceed them if we like them or not. I didn't see a large discrepancy there and didn't feel it needed a direct comment. I think, I think, I think I closed the questions at that, at that point. And I think we will proceed. I don't, I didn't see any large discrepancy again in what I heard and what your comment was. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, adjournment. This concludes the August 16th, 2022 regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at 7:47 PM. As discussed, the next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on September 20th, 2022 at 7 PM. District Clerk Vargas, please stop the recording.